I'd like to welcome everybody to the Nevada Community School District Board of Education Meeting, December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. With that, I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I would seek approval of the agenda as placed before us tonight.
So who's?
Second. Motion and a second to approve the agenda for our meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Have a meeting. Public comment, Brian. Anybody get ahold of us, anything they want to talk about?
No.
Okay. Four point one, Dr. Heinzwell. Thank you for spending this cold evening with us.
No problem. Um, I'm not using this, right, Joe?
It's above your head, so you're good.
Okay, super. Yeah, that's right, I forgot about that. It's like the big brother listening in or something, right?
You're kind of here in the room.
I like it. Um, course guide, we are, we're right about the same time we normally do. We're probably a little bit early. Um, the reason for course guide coming to in December this year as opposed to maybe January, where it normally has been, is our, our teachers had requested that we try to do our orientation and our registration days during that two-week period where we have some lockdown seminar right after the first semester, so that way we don't lose some additional time later on. So, um, that was a change that we worked to implement this year, so we're, um, a little bit ahead of where we, uh, normally are. Um, you have, uh, course guide edits that are there, um, uh, that I can just kind of work down through. Um, some of the things that I think are, uh, kind of some of the more major changes, um, is we made the change to reflect the, uh, board's decision on our graduation requirements, um, to indicate thirty-three courses required, um, and that twenty or thir- to thirty-two and then twenty electives, with financial literacy no longer being a required course, um, for students to have to take, obviously, after that, that changed late in the year last year. Um, uh, there were a number of parts of our course guide that seemed to come and just sort of conflict, uh, and then there was pieces that we just, we hadn't been doing since I was here, and we just wanted to kind of honor, uh, some of those things. So, uh, an example would be, um, there was an entire portion of the course guide that talked about having like a contract that students would sign to take any DMAC or honors courses, um, and like AP courses and things like that, um, that in the four years that I was there had never been used, um, and so we just felt like we needed to honor, like, that's not a thing that we're requiring students to do. I'm going to guess that some of that went by the wayside when we were moving towards having some of those more individual scheduling meetings, so rather than it being a, "Do you understand what you're signing up for? Here's this document that you need to complete," most of those conversations are taking place with kids when they're scheduling their classes. Um, so we pulled that out, but before we pulled that contract out, we wanted to make sure and verify that the elements of those, uh, pieces that were previously on page nineteen were located in and throughout the other portions of the course guide. Um, and when we talked about our college credit options and guidelines and things like that, a lot of those points were hit in those areas, um, or in our honors, uh, kind of section, which it just kind of outlined what our honors options are. Um, uh, that's another area that we just tried to clean up. Um, we had several courses that were named honors, and I don't know altogether, I'm not altogether sure why, um, there weren't like, there's not another option of them that is not honors. Um, so there are some courses that we kept as honors, so there's still an honors biology, there's still an honors chemistry, um, there's still an honors English nine, um, but psychology doesn't have two options, so there's just psychology. Um, there's not two options of, uh, anatomy and physiology dual credit, um, so we dropped the honors name from that. Same thing with calculus, um, there's not two options for that, so we just kind of, kind of came back to like, what is this really, and like, is there a reason that we're calling it that? And it, there didn't appear to be any when we, um, did some digging with some of those things, so, um, those are some of the changes that I feel like we saw, um, that kind of came throughout, and then that like, indicated some other like, language in the past, you know, we would have something in there that would say like, "Please see page eighteen and nineteen for your contract in order to be in X course." Um, so we changed some of that language so that it would note that students needed to review the expectations as opposed to maybe, um, changing some of the, or, or signing an official contract, um, to be in some of those types of, uh, of courses. Um, we, we had a few new courses that were added, including, and then some additional course language changes, um, that took place. Um, so, just kind of bumping through, we, we no longer offer sports management, that was a course that Mr. Thompson and, um, um, gosh, Lori Stevenson had like, kind of co-ran, um, that sort of went by the wayside in and around the COVID time, and Lori has just kind of taken that on, so we removed that as an option. Um, uh, we are returning to an art exploratory, um, which would be like an entry-level art course that will cover both, um, ceramic and claywork, but also draw, paint, things like that, um, and so we'd like to add that back in. Um, that was previously a course that then just kind of stopped existing, and now we would like to kind of move back in that direction, um, and then made some edits. Um, anytime we have a new teacher or a new staff member that comes onboard, they'd like to tweak and kind of adjust a few things. Um, the basic core of what we're offering in art will stay the same, but I think just some of the language that they were, um, working with, they wanted to, to make some changes to. Um, sculptures, it was a course that is no longer offered, um, that we pulled out of the system with the dual-credit side of ceramics one and two, which is just not a class that we seem to be able to fit into the schedule. Uh, jazz band was removed as a course. Um, it's, I would kind of akin it more to like an extracurricular of band as opposed to like a course, um, but up until recently, there were students that would get credit for taking this jazz band course, uh, and so we worked with Mr. Barker and asked kind of what his feelings were. He seemed to align a little bit closer, more closely to where I was at, thinking about it as more of an extra credit, um, or not an extra credit, but an extracurricular to band, as opposed to like, another course that you would receive credit for. There's other choir alternatives, so our jazz choir, um, doesn't receive credit, but then jazz band was, so it just wasn't really lining up.
I thought we were.
Yeah, and you, some of our kids who are in jazz band, like, didn't even know that they were getting it, um, and so it just, it just was the right thing to kind of move away, um, from that as well.
For jazz choir, we haven't any.
Oh, perfect. Um, super. Yeah, you should be getting a quarter of a credit, so, um, yeah, so, other things for us to like, um, you know, uh, uh, kind of work ourselves through. I would akin jazz choir very much like I would jazz band, like, it's an extension of choir, um, it's an extra piece to choir. Um, if I was a choir student, um, which I was, who was into those types of things, like, I would understand, like, that's not my choir grade, that's not a curricular grade that I'm going to get, or a credit that I would receive. I'm just really into jazz band, or I'm really into band, and so that's a new way or another way that I can just be a part of some of those things. Um, some course name changes, uh, again, with, um, um, moving adaptive art and PE and music to unified art, PE and music. Um, that language is more aligned to the PE expectations, PE standards, um, so I was a little, at first I was like, I don't get why, but then it made sense to me when they shared that this is actually more aligned with, um, what the, the industry standards are and what they're used to seeing in terms of their, um, professional learning and things like that. Um, and then just kind of some small, uh, changes, uh, updates to, to course language and things like that. Um, no real, uh, major changes beyond pulling, um, that contract piece out. Um, I guess two other changes. We wanted to make sure that whatever list our, our kids were accessing for either DMAC or Edmentum were more current than what we were able to offer, um, and so you'd notice at the end of the course guide, it would look like there was a big, like, we took like, big chunks out, um, but really what we did is we just linked to, um, DMAC's, uh, course list, um, and kind of demonstrated, here's how you would get to the online course options, that you could see what was available to a student, um, and then we keep a more updated list of Edmentum courses, um, that students could access as well, and kind of pinpointed, you know, these are courses that our in-person learners can take, these are courses that students who are fully online, this would be the full course list, um, that they could have, um, access to as well. So, those two pieces, I think, were, were kind of bigger changes, um, in the course guide, if you were looking for, um, you know, some of those types of things.
You spoke to this earlier, here when you started. Is there any value of dating when you do these changes?
Say that one more time.
Is there any value to dating? We, when we do policy reviews?
Sure.
We timestamp it. This is when we did this, we're going to do it here, right, you know, coming up.
Yep.
Is there any value, because, I mean, when you start, this is, well, I don't know how long this has been here, and I don't know when this was brought in. If you could say, well, the calendar year or school year of this, would that be any value to administration, both here and in the future?
Well, I think it kind of depends, and I think some of it depends on how you organize your files, um, to, to make that. Since we do this every single year, and like, we re, we're kind of, it's almost would be like a policy update every single year, and so like, you know, I don't necessarily know that there's like a great deal of value to say dating, like, this is based off of this, unless it's a certain like type of contract that we might use with a group of kids, or here's our expectations for what we are wanting you to do for concurrent enrollment courses, things like that. Um, but that doesn't necessarily, I don't feel like necessarily shows up in here quite as much. So like, an example would be like, well, when do you, um, uh, for the kids now, and if you have kids in the system right now, you're seeing messages from me that are saying, hey, we're changing the way that we're signing up for our DMAC classes, because what has been happening to us in the past few years is students or, uh, students might wait until the very last minute, and then they want to make a change, there's not very many classes that are available, so they sign up for a course, that course gets denied because it's full already, they sign up for another course, and all of a sudden they finally get a course, but we're three, four days into the start of the semester, they don't have their books yet, so those are some of the changes that I think would probably be more warranted of like, we started that in twenty-three, twenty-four, um, than anything else, um, but that doesn't necessarily show up in here as much as it does, you know, policy pieces as it might in like our handbook and things like that.
Just, you, if you had not spoken to it, I probably wouldn't even ask about it.
Sure, yeah.
Anybody else?
I'm curious about the financial list stuff. When did this become not a requirement? Because I can tell you, all the kids in there right now thought it was still a requirement.
Yeah, so it was, um, it was after everybody left, and it would have been in like, I want to say in early June, when the legislature finally like, got all their ducks in a row and like, passed like, two or three different things, and it was like stuffed inside of there somewhere, uh, and so then I don't, I want to say that perhaps the board had a discussion on it in either late June, or maybe at the, did you guys have a, a single July meeting?
I think it might have been that meeting.
I want to say it was the single July meeting, so then by the time we started the year, there was no good way of us like, sharing it, and then like, if I'm also honest, I had like a slight fear of like, if we like, pushed all that out to everybody, then we were going to end in this like, where do twenty kids end up? And then do we have capacity to serve their, or meet their needs? Um, so I, we just kind of made the decision that like, we're just going to kind of keep moving along with that. As kids came in, and we had decisions or discussions with students, and they were looking at different course options, we would talk about like, technically as of right now, that's not a requirement, so if we wanted to move away from that, but also, all, I would also say, to my surprise, there was a number of kids that even when we did share that, were like, yeah, but I think I still want to take that, um, uh, for whatever reason. Could be that it was, college credit was going to be attached to it this year, or at least have the possibility of, or not, but this year we wanted to make sure that we had that, you know, denoted in the course guide, um, and then that'll be a part of Mr. Thompson's kind of discussion as well.
Sounds good, yeah.
Yeah. This is what it is.
There was just a lot of, I know that there was a lot of hubbub of like, is it required? Is it not required? There was, we just didn't know whether it was or not, because people were saying different things, but as long as it's listed for the kids next year.
Yep.
Really good, yeah.
So, as it's presented to us, this is cleaning things up, making it easier for a student, parents, or both, to make decisions on what classes they take. Is that what you see?
Yeah, I think, I mean, every kid uses this, um, especially during that scheduling time, so.
No, definitely, I think linking in like the, like, DMAC courses, like, just adding the link in there instead of like listing, then makes it a lot easier, because I know last year I was first starting to take DMAC classes, like, there was this one list I was looking at that was in the handbook, but then it didn't necessarily align with like, the DMAC's like first thirty-two list, so then I was starting to like, think about classes, like, oh, I could sign up for this, but then it didn't transfer to major universities, so I think having that first thirty-two, like, oh, this is actually going to transfer to major universities, and this is like worth your time taking, and that'll be a lot more helpful.
And I think that that's like another, that's another thing that, that us trying to get kids in, to come in to connect with Ms. Westerhoff or myself, that, that's a goal of that, is, you know, when the, when the link just goes out and there isn't a lot of discussion about what you're signing up for, as a kid, I might just see a course and I'm like, yeah, cool, that sounds fun, like, I'll take that, but what happens with that course is a little bit different. So I, the last two or three years, you've probably heard me pushing pretty hard on like, you should look at this DMAC first thirty-two, right? Like, these are courses that DMAC and Regent Universities and state private universities would all agree and like, have an agreement that they'll take it as actual credit, so if I take Psych one-eleven at DMAC, it will go as Intro to Psychology to Iowa State or Iowa, or you and I, or wherever, and so we also linked that in there as well, just to have that piece that's there, um, just to try to provide a little bit more clarity. I think there's a little bit of a misnomer about, well, I've got all this college credit, well, what does that college credit do for you? Is maybe a, a really good second question, um, is it just coming in as elective credit? That like, that's nice, but I don't know how that helps you get closer to your degree or get closer to, you know, kind of checking off all those boxes, and so I think that's something that we've been really trying to work on. Um, it'll be, this will be tricky this next cycle, right, this next semester, um, because we'll essentially be telling kids, you need to sign up for your DMAC class before you leave in May for August, and I think there will be a little bit of a disconnect for kids, um, unless we're hitting it really, really hard, so, um, to let kids know, because again, the same thing, we start making all these changes over the summer, and there's time to make the changes over the summer, but I will also tell you, I was really surprised now that I'm a little closer to the guidance side of things with, uh, Mr. Baker's departure, and being a little bit more involved in some of the things, how quickly the courses filled up, that kids really need to be taking as opposed to just what's available.
This is coming back as they, I'll bring this as an action item on January fifteenth. Do you have any questions between now and then? We can certainly get those addressed for you. Good job.
Thank you.
Ladies, good job. I'm glad that, you know, you sat in the room, feel comfortable asking, because you clearly see this document as something we do not. And anything that helps next year's students is appreciated, so sometimes you just have to start a conversation and get to an outcome, so thank you.
That was great input.
Yeah, that's why you're here. Five point one, Joe Wakeman would like to talk to us about a wireless projection.
Good evening, everyone. So the, the quote that we've got here today is for wireless projection devices, uh, they're called screen beams, uh, so kind of a, a summary of, of how we've gotten here, so all of our classrooms have a device called an air tame in them, so all of our projectors, all of our conference rooms, um, in here, they've all got air tames attached to them. Uh, we've had air tames in one way or another for probably eight years or so. Um, we started at the middle school with the first generation of them, and then we kind of slowly phased through the other buildings, uh, with newer hardware. Um, the, the newest ones we've got right now are over at Central, and we put those in, in twenty-nineteen or twenty-twenty, uh, but, and, kind of the whole gist of the device is so that teachers and students and guests can connect to the projector, the TV in every room without having to have a cable, without having to install any software, they just kind of walk in wherever they're at and connect up. You're not fumbling with adapters and things, uh, to make it easy for everyone. Um, as time has gone on and the years have gone on, those air tame devices have become more and more unreliable, um, and it's to the point that, you know, we've, we've spent, I don't know how many hours troubleshooting, is it a wireless issue, is it a projector issue, is it an air tame issue? Um, and in talking with other school districts around the state and country, we're finding, no, it's probably an air tame issue, that these, the current generation of hardware that air tames are on have been around for several years, and in fact, um, talked to somebody that they had laid off, an engineer, and he said that these current devices were supposed to be end-of-life a few years ago, but air tames just trying to, you know, squeak as much as they can out of the devices, which, you know, we are too, we don't want to have to spend money needlessly, uh, but we're at the point that, you know, teachers are having to spend instructional time fiddling with these things to make them work, and to call us in and to have it work, but then only to, to not work a period later, a day later, or whatever, so we're at the point that we've been investigating, um, some new devices over the last several months, um, and, uh, Screen Beam is a device that, that we've had in testing now at each building for, for several weeks. Um, the, the teachers that have them, they've worked really well, um, have gotten no negative feedback at all, um, so, we're to the point now that we're just going to kind of do a little, little more testing here over the next week and, week or two weeks, and kind of make sure that that's the direction that we want to go, but what I'm asking for tonight is permission that, you know, if everything goes well the next couple of weeks, that we could go ahead and, and order those devices and start getting them in. Um, so, uh, Joe asked some great questions over the weekend, one of them was, you know, our, our, our projectors and our TVs, do we need to replace those too? Because like, at the high school, we just replaced those projectors, is that something? So, um, the projectors and TVs, those will all stay, uh, the, the air tame and now Screen Beam is a separate device, it just kind of plugs into the, to the projector, the TV, and does its thing, um, so it'll work with everything that we already have, we'll just take the little, we call them lovingly the hockey puck, and maybe not lovingly sometimes, but take the little hockey puck, the old air tame device out, put the new Screen Beam in. Um, so, uh, the plan would be just pull the old devices out, put the new devices in. Um, you know, as, as far as resale value and that sort of thing, um, we'll certainly reach out, reach out to some of the other area school districts to see, you know, many use air tame, I know Ames uses quite a few of them, um, to see if they have any interest in them, but honestly, I don't know that, I mean, everybody's kind of in the same boat we are, that they work, but they're not great, there's got to be something better out there. So, I don't have a lot of faith that anybody will, uh, bite on wanting those devices, but we'll try, um, and I'll hold on to a handful of them just to be emergency spares that if, if a Screen Beam goes down or something, and should there be some kind of electronic shortage, kind of like what we saw during COVID, that we'll have something on hand, which is always better than nothing, but, you know, preferably we'll replace a Screen Beam, should it go out with another Screen Beam. Um, so the, the quote here, it's kind of year-end, um, fire sale pricing, you know, salespeople are always trying to, year-end, try and, try and get all these great deals in that they can, so what they're doing for us is for every ten Screen Beams that we purchase, they're going to give us one for free. So, we've got a little over a hundred and forty between projectors and TVs across the district, so, uh, the quote here is for a hundred and thirty, they'll give us, they'll give us ten extra, um, ten extra, yeah, they'll give us ten extra for free, uh, as part of that, and we'll probably end up getting a few more just to have some spares on, on hand, because we like to keep those, keep those on hand, um, but, yeah, that's kind of the gist of it. I, I guess the other thing is, um, kind of one of the unique challenges that we find with trying to purchase things like this is, we've got a mixed environment, our staff have Apple laptops, our students have Chromebooks, we have iPads at the elementary, a lot of our visitors have PCs, what can we do that makes it easy on all of those people? You know, you could go buy an Apple TV, well, they don't work great in large scale anyway, um, but again, those only support Apple devices, so, one thing that we looked at, and we loved with the air tame, that we find that we, it was kind of a non-negotiable, and then we've, the Screen Beam offers that as well, is, it's what we call agnostic, so it doesn't matter who's connecting, you just show up, you connect to it, and, and it works, and, and that's kind of been a great thing, especially with us having Gates Hall now, we get a lot of visitors and things in and out with meetings, and they ask, well, how do we connect? Yeah, you just do this. Really? It's that easy? And, and it's just, it's, it's nice when you get, make things easier for people and get those compliments, that it just, it works, and, and it works easy, and, you know, we take these things into account, into account, that, you know, a lot of schools that AEA go to or, or outside visitors go to, that it's, you know, you think about your internal needs, but you don't quite think about the needs of folks that come to your building that don't, aren't regularly there, so how do you accommodate them? And, and the air tames offered that, and that was something that we found, we needed to find with a replacement device, and we'll have that with these as well, so.
So is this something you, as you get them in with approval?
Yep.
At some point, you're just going to start sprinkling them through the district?
Yep, depending on, so, it'll take us about ten, fifteen minutes per room to swap out. Elementary and middle school are easy, because I can stand on a small ladder, or table, or, hopefully Osha's not listening, but, pretty quick to swap in and out. High school, where we've got taller ceilings, we kind of have to drag a taller ladder around to, to get in those rooms, so, the thought would be, we'll try and knock out, we know some rooms that have, that have had repeated issues with these air tames, we're going to knock those out first, and then try and slowly, you know, as we get time, try and do a few a day or a few a week, um, as we can fit them in our, our schedules.
Anything here need changed out?
Big gates?
Yeah.
Yep, yep, so we've got five air tames in this building, so we'll replace those as well.
Is that what that is?
That thing right there? Nope, that's our wireless access point.
That's what I thought.
Yep, yep, so the air tames in here actually are over in the server room, we've got cabling to go from there in here, because they honestly need rebooted about once a day, so that's kind of my daily chore, when I come in, I stop in the server room, unplug all five, plug them back in, and they're rebooted, so now with these new devices, that might save me a little bit of my, my morning ritual. Um, and, you know, that's another thing that, that, you know, with teachers, especially at the high school, if they need rebooted, well, I can't ask a teacher to stand on a desk and unplug this thing to reboot it, so, you've got to go run over there, find a ladder, drag a twelve-foot ladder across the building, so, there's a lot of reasons why we want to shift to something else, but the biggest thing for us is lost instructional time, we don't want to be a barrier or, or, or an issue, that tech's got to just work, right? And that should be the last thing a teacher's got to worry about, is knowing if they can project their stuff on a screen, or a student goes to present, and to know if it's going to present or not, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm used to, um, using tech in my, my work environment.
Yep.
And, so I was trying to reconcile, you know, how I use it, and people I work with use it, to how it's used here in the schools, and, and I was, that was challenging for me.
Yep.
Um, my world is a lot smaller than I, than I thought it was, uh, but I went to the Screen Beam website.
Yep.
And I watched, um, well, like a product demo or something, it's about a thirteen-minute video, I didn't get through it all.
Yep.
I was distracted by work. But, um, but it was really, uh, eye-opening to me to see how, how that software is used.
Yep.
In a classroom.
Yep.
As opposed to how I use stuff.
Yep.
For my work.
Yep.
To me, it's like, you know, Bluetooth, I can cast.
Yep.
My, my screen up on that screen so everyone can see.
Yep.
You know, the highway plans I'm looking at, or whatever.
Yep.
And, and the Screen Beam and the air tame do so much more.
Yep, and that, that was a great point that you brought up, was, can we just do Bluetooth? Because like, these TVs, they've got it built in, or, and our projectors don't, but a lot of our TVs do, why don't we just use that, because it's built in? Well, a lot of times those aren't, they work for one platform but not the other, especially the Chromebooks, or, you know, they're, they're made for home, where, you know, doing it at home is one thing, but when I've got fifty of them in a building, all trying to talk on the network at the same time, it can cause a lot of issues, which, a lot of schools, when they went one-to-one with Macs or iPads, they just bought Apple TVs, because it was an easy thing to do, but, and, we did this when I was at Webster City, that we bought Apple TVs, because that's the easy way to make it work, but it's just something that wasn't built for a large scale. Um, so, really, these kind of devices, you know, we're, we're pretty unique in education that we've got this many, I mean, realistically, every room or office has one of these things. You think a, a traditional business, every office or every cube doesn't have one of these, your conference rooms, you might have a handful of them in a space, but you don't have a lot of these all over, so it, education brings a lot of unique challenges, um, to, to these kind of things, but luckily, we're not, we're not isolated, that we're the only ones that need this kind of stuff, so.
Among the many, many functions, uh, you know, that, that the air tame and Screen Beam are able to do.
Yep.
One that really caught my, my eye and kind of made me smile a little bit was how teacher in the classroom.
Yep.
You know, one of the, one of the things this will do, they could essentially wipe.
Yep.
The student's screen. The student's screen.
Yep.
You know, and I know I'm not using the right words, but, but blank it out to get everyone's attention.
Yep.
You know?
Yep. And there's, there's a ton that these things will do. I mean, they'll integrate with your fire alarm system that if you had TVs or something, that your fire alarm goes off and they interrupt everything you're doing and say, there's a fire, you need to go to this location. I mean, there's, there's so many pieces that that they, these things will do that I would have never thought of was.
Feature as well, are they, are you planning on doing mutation like that by putting it into the alert systems in the buildings?
Probably, yeah. Our initial goal would be to get it out there to replace the air tames and then
Sure.
kind of learn how some of that other functionality works. Because they say it'll do it, but how that integrates and things, I don't know. And, but yeah, it certainly is something that is worth looking at.
Yeah, I was impressed by the, the, I checked it out as well like Joe did. So it, so it looks like it takes the native devices functionality like for an Apple device, it uses AirPlay to link to it and for like a Windows device, sometimes they use Mircast. So it has all those built into the?
And that's the super appealing thing here because air tame, you need to download an app to make it work, which that's not the end of the world, but I can think of right off the top of my head, we had Mary Greeley come over to do some training here a few months ago and their staff couldn't install things on their laptop. It just, their organization doesn't let them install software, so couldn't make that work. Whereas with the Screen Beams, it uses what's built into each platform and you know, even like we've got the guest network segmented off. I did a lot of testing with my personal cell phone to cast to our TV and that works, which is something that's important to be able to let guests when they show up, whether it's for something at the high school or training for staff or somebody renting gates that they just walk in and it works and there's not a lot of fiddling on our end or having to explain how to install something or.
Does it have Chrome Pass?
It does. Yep. Sure does.
So the Chromebooks will
Yep.
Be integrated that way?
Yep.
Sounds great. All right.
Yeah. It actually offers more device connected, connection options than our current air tames do. So.
Might bend your ear later just personally to see if you might be able to replace some of the stuff we've been using in our building at work because it's crap.
That's right. I've had a few folks from Ames stop over to look at how, how they're working for us and they're pretty interested. So their Ames schools is probably shortly behind us that they start rolling some of these things out. But yeah, it's, it's, I hate to say our testing is gone.
Jinx yourself?
Yeah, I don't want to jinx myself, but like, and I've had pretty low expectations that you know, we know how the air tames work. We know they're finicky. And with anything like this, you're going to have some stuff that's just finicky. It's it's bound to happen. But I mean, we've had, our high school and middle school units have been out there for well over a month and haven't had a single issue. Hopefully this is one. So we're really excited that, that we're going to have something that, that works and going to be one less stress point for, for staff.
Does this purchase come with support from Screen Beam or AVI system?
Yep. So it comes with support from Screen Beam. So we'll get the one-year warranty, which is pretty standard with, with all of this stuff. So. Nice thing about these is there's no ongoing cost. So air tame, one of the reasons why we wanted to move away from air tame is the device, it's a one-time cost and you can buy, they call it a cloud subscription where you can do more and more things and then pay a yearly fee. But they're kind of moving a lot of the things that we used to be able to for free to this paid option, making you have to pay for this yearly thing that quite frankly, would be about $10,000 a year. Whereas is these devices, there's no, that's, that's not how they operate. So we'll have, we've got an onsite server here already that's running for our test units. We'll add these into it. We can control them. There's no extra cost or added cost for that. And it's that way forever. And at some point, we'll, we'll replace the devices. Like I told Joe, hoping to get four to five years out of them, but as tech and things change, you know, that could always be a shorter lifespan, but that's, that's kind of how long I'm, I'm hoping to get out of them maybe a little bit more and try to tie them with our projector replacement cycle that when we replace buildings worth of projectors, we'll replace the entire AV package in our projector, Screen Beam and all that at the same time.
So as these come in and you have the opportunity to install, these should all be in by the start of school this fall.
Yeah, they'll ship really quick. I mean, they'll, we'll have them beginning of January.
Installed?
Not installed, but in, in district, we'll have them all installed by spring break probably. That would certainly be the goal, try and get them out as quick as we can. Because it's kind of tough to operate a split environment, especially when it's a little bit different mechanics of how to connect to one versus the other. So to explain that to staff and students to, well, if you're in such and such room, this is how you connect, or if you're in this room, this is how you connect. It's not a great. Want to minimize that, that kind of headache and confusion as much as we can. And it'll come out of, already exists a budget. So it's not like it's, it's new budget that we need for this or anything. So.
Anybody have anything else that you have heard? AC, anything? Straightforward.
I'll move approval of the technology quote for purchase of Screen Beams for the, for the district, the amount of $59,571.20 with an F testing warrants purchased. Moving forward.
I'm not seeing all that. We have a motion and a second for our technology quote as presented by Joe Wakeman tonight to the board. Any further questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. You know. 5.2, 300 series policy review, Dr.
Yeah, we've been pretty good about giving the policy primaries in on a regular basis, but to do full, full series policy reviews, been a little bit behind on that. So want to get caught up on that this year, starting with the 300 series, which I sent you the 300 series and/or you can obviously access the entire series on our website. I then went through our entire series, compared it to the school board association's reference manual and ours aligned identically. The only two exceptions there that I'm suggesting that we change are which aren't substantive to the policy, but just where we have them in the series. Our current 302.7 is actually listed as 302.8 in their manual and then the 303.8 is listed as 303.9 in their manual. So I would just suggest that we change those because if we get a new policy and they slot it in there, we'd kind of like it to match up with theirs. But otherwise, we are pretty much verbatim in line with their policies. There were a few policies where we had some additional verbiage, but we had certainly the, the minimum recommended in there. So one of the easier policy series to start with.
I'm of approval of the changes for the 300 policy series as presented to the board.
Second.
Motion and second to adopt the listed changes in the packet for our 300 series policies. Any last questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda. Thank you for going to the trouble to look up all those early graduations.
Yep.
Well, we've got Dr. Onswyther took the information that I shared and some information that he already had and he built a Google Doc that we'll, we'll continue to build on. So it'll be a little easier for us to pull that up in the future.
What are some of these students doing that allows them to get so far so fast that some of our other students aren't doing? I mean, I marvel when you sit there and see a junior coming out of, graduating. What are they doing?
You know, I think there are two things that Dr. Onswyther and I have kind of discussed this. You know, in our efforts over the years to individualize for students, we've tried to get more creative. And I would say in Dr. Asmus's last couple of years as principal, started to tap into, you know, that Edmentum and online options that we use with our alt students. We started to tap into some of those with other students just to try to resolve conflicts and schedules and get kids what they needed. So you took that and then we had the pandemic and of course, our online offerings went whole scale, middle school, high school. And so, you know, students came out of that experience with a lot more, I guess, access, more comfortable in some of those online environments. And so I would say we haven't really returned to when we talk about the number of online courses and students, we haven't really, we haven't returned to that. We're not at that pandemic level, of course, but we haven't returned to that pre-pandemic. We're close, but we haven't, it's not gotten that low again. And then I think you combine that with some of these students are getting the alt diplomas, which is a reduction in credit. So when you combine that you can get through the Edmentum courses, particularly in the alt program at a little swifter pace and less credits. I think that would, some of that explains the uptick that we're seeing in, you know, a handful more of early grads each year than we were, say, six, seven years ago, where we would get eight or 10 and now we're seeing 16. So that, those are just some of the things that we've discussed. We're kind of theorizing as to why there's a few more now.
Do you ever say no to a student?
I mean, it's kind of goes against like the general philosophy, right? So our general philosophy has always been to let kids try to blaze their own trail, whatever that trail is. And so it's hard to say, well, blaze your own trail as long as your trail is the trail that we want you to be blazing. But if it's what we don't agree with, then no. So we have had students, particularly juniors, usually when a student is graduating at a term or a semester of their senior year, there's something, there's something that's there. There's a, a program that they're pretty immediately going into. There's a work aspect that they're just ready to just, like, just get me onto that. Where we've had, I think, our biggest, boy, we feel very conflicted about this and have had like, what I would say, maybe a, a number of like conversations. Nah, let's bring mom and dad in. Let's have a conversation about this. Let's bring so-and-so in. Let's talk about like, are you sure you want to forego these possibilities and options? And so in some of those junior meetings, we will oftentimes find ourselves seated there saying, here's what your schedule could look like next year. Here's the college courses that we might be able to afford you, right? Here's the program that we feel like would be a benefit to you. We believe that it's in your best interest to see this out and take advantage of what we're willing to do for you monetarily, right, and an opportunity. But there are still times when even through that, we still have kids who are just like, yeah, no, I'm, I'm good. Thank you though. I see what you can do. I appreciate that, but no. And so I, I don't necessarily know, Marty, that it's a no as much as it is just trying to show here's what the opportunities are. And sometimes even through some of those deeper conversations, it still is, I'm just, I'm just ready. I'm ready to move on from this. So yeah, I, I feel like that typically happens more with our junior students who are interested in graduating a year early as a junior, you know, and, and missing or foregoing that senior year than, than it is the graduated semester or term or whatever. Honestly, like both of the two that are sitting here probably could have graduated early if they wanted to, right? Probably almost a year early, if I'm honest. And one other aspect too is that we have a number of ways that our kids can accelerate. So oftentimes our kids will walk into high school with a full semester or more of things done. And so that's something else that we, that impacts. We just try to have a lot of things on the backside, whether it's apprenticeships or college courses or DMAT Career Academy programs. So that way there's a benefit to continuing to work with us because we want them to be here. We want to provide that benefit because we think it's in their best interest. But there are some students who are just, are just ready to, just ready to move on.
I was going to say, have, has counseling with the students or, or students' families caused a student to change their mind about?
Yeah, I would say so. I'm, you know, it's, I would say it's maybe like a 50-50 kind of mixed bag type of thing, but I think there are some students who would have said, yeah, I'm ready to go or I'm ready to graduate early or, you know, I'm, I'm ready to, you know, exit an IEP and we might sit down and say like, hey, let's think really hard about the ramifications of that decision. And then there are times when a mom or a dad's like, oh, I guess I didn't, I didn't realize that those were some other options. Now that I know that, I feel like that changes some of our decisions. And then sometimes they're like, hey, I'm here to support my kid in their decision. And if this is what they want, this is what they want. And we say, okay, we will do our best to support you in that, even if maybe we don't agree with that decision. We're still there to try to support them in that, in that process and, and in that direction.
Yeah, I guess I would say I come from the, the tag group of students, I guess, from our grade. I'm not a classified tag kid, but I'm in the same group as them. And I know pretty much all of us could have graduated at the end of last year if we had wanted to because we were pushed so far ahead in middle school that I think every single one of us came into the high school having at least four, if not a lot of kids having six or more. Which just because we're all the, those types of students, we've all taken full years worth of credits. So I know all of us could have graduated and I think that there's only maybe two or three max from my particular seminar class that have chosen to graduate early because we're all just taking advantage of the college classes and business internships and those other opportunities that you get as upperclassmen, I guess. But there are some kids that just definitely just have their mindset. So.
And mine, mine, my source is like a little different, but kind of similar. So I was homeschooled up until my freshman year of high school. So like I wasn't able to get all those high school credits because just none of my homeschool credits transferred. So then I had to make up an extra year of math and science and language arts, but because like I didn't take, I hardly took any elective classes, like I could have also graduated early last year. But then I've just chosen to take advantage of DMAT classes all last year and all this year. And like, I've sat down with my parents, like, like looked through all my credits and all of that and like, I should be able to get done with college in three years, which just saves a lot of money. And that's like one of the reasons why I'm choosing to go to an out-of-state school because I can do it in three years. Like it's just more easily affordable. And so like, I just think it definitely for people that weren't able to take high school classes and middle school, like if they choose to take less electives, then like they definitely can graduate early if they need to. And I know I could have last year, but I really enjoyed my grade and taking advantage of all those like DMAT classes and all the other stuff in my senior year.
I think another reason a lot of kids stay is they think we have to stay to take government and it used to be financial it, but apparently it's not anymore. But a lot of us also stay at least through first, the first quarter, first semester to get government and those final classes that are really like life prep classes right before you graduate as well.
We got a lot of extra curricular activities. Does that hold you to? I mean, look what you guys do outside of the activities.
Yeah, for some kids, that's definitely a big part of it.
For me, like, I mean, I really like doing track. I like, I throw a shot disc and so that's not a thing that's like holding me to that. Some of my other things, I'm like, oh yeah, like I'd kind of miss that, but like not as much as like track and just the environment that I get from that.
I think it's a fair assumption to say that most of the students that you see that would graduate early probably don't. For whatever reason, don't have that connection to some sort of an extracurricular piece or something like that. I think that's a safe assumption.
Well, that's the most I can ever recall talking about early graduations.
We're trying to be a little bit more pointed about when we get them to you so that you get them right at the start of a term and communicating that with our kids too. So. So, or right at the, right before a term ends as opposed to intermittently throughout. So Dr. Gray and I have targeted a handful of board meetings that, to provide them to you so that you're, you know, prepared for those decisions, and we've got that communicated with kids too, so.
Does the Department of Education or, or the state, I mean, do they lay out any rules for, for early graduations? Or is it just kind of as long as you get the, as long as you've done the work, you can do it?
I, Dr. Gray, I don't know if like, I, I mean, they're, they lay out your core expectations that you have to have for graduate, to have a graduated student. Each board gets to make above that or below that, right, or above that or at that for their, you know, limits and decisions. And if students meet that criteria, then they have the opportunity to make that decision if they want to. Some choose to, some don't. I think the, one of the uniqueness, unique aspects that we have is that alternative diploma cuts down on the elective expectation. It also in, it also prohibits you or is a little bit of a barrier if you're like, well, now I want to go to DMAC or Iowa State. That alternative diploma doesn't get you into that door right off the bat. So, you know, if you're looking at a two-year, four-year, typically, we would tell any student that is interested in that, you need to make sure that you graduate on a regular diploma, so 52-credit diploma. Some of our kids who are pretty set and, and I set on the working world right after school, that becomes an avenue that perhaps that's something they're interested in. We generally don't offer that or start that conversation unless we're talking about a credit deficient student who is in that, that piece. I would also say the more that we've had online and the more that we've kind of tailored different plans to kids, there's an efficiency of being able to move through some of those programs that we've just, we've seen a, a higher rate at, at sometimes too for some of our kids, which is necessary and it helps keep our graduation rate up as well. Or else we would be kind of stuck with some of those, some of those students who would be not having an avenue to that. So I think you combine all of those pieces together, and I think that's where you get some of these students that, why does it look like we're having, you know, more than before?
That might be an interesting thing to track too, as, as you track the number of early graduations is, is how many of those are, are alt diplomas and how many are, are full diplomas?
Starting this year, we'll have that.
Thank you.
Anybody see anything else in their consent agenda that they'd like to, any bills? Anything in fundraisers? We always have a fundraiser going on. Ryan, how are we doing on paper? Here's where the cricket part of the conversation reappears. When you can find the cricket font, I'd probably ask you more questions, but this thing, it makes me go blinder.
You're asking about financials?
Yeah, just.
For fines?
How are we doing on paper? Someone over there can read out like.
How many reams of paper do we have? Are we going to have enough reams of paper to get through? And what happens to that budget if, if we get snow? Then what happens to paper?
We're just going to bring up snow is the one we blame when the budget gets broke. Way to go, Liam.
I would have thought that too.
Save money.
Okay, fine.
I was like, why are we specifically putting up paper? Why is that the one thing we're worrying about? Sorry, Brian.
Got nothing there. I guess I'm looking at page 25 and I kind of watched the nutrition fund balance. So on the liabilities, the inter-fund account, you know, it doesn't owe, I mean, it, it's leveled off. Am I right? Okay. So it, it owes the general nothing.
Well, yeah, as far as the, as the debt to the general fund, no, there isn't anything there. The amount you see there monthly is the amount that is charged to the food service fund for payroll. Okay, those payrolls paid out of the general fund each month.
Okay. No bills, Joe?
Good. Page, uh.
I know.
Since you asked.
I was just saying, since you asked. He's that guy.
On page 19 of, you know, the, the P-card listings, of course, there's a number of entries that are identified as fraud.
Yeah.
I mean, that's insignificant amounts there. Was our card compromised or something?
Yeah, we had a card here in the office that we loaned out that was compromised. And we picked up on it, called in and canceled the card, and they came up with a lot more of those fraud things. Basically, the charges were, we, we looked it up on, on the webs, on their website. And basically, it's a lifestyle sort of a thing that somebody was charging against the, against the P-cards. And every one of those charges there will be reversed next month, and that's been confirmed by, by the P-card issuing company.
Many services Joe provides the board.
That's, that's just tough. You can't keep a track of all that, you know? As many transactions as, as a business office handles in a, in a month. Holy cow. Tough to keep on top of. I mean, thank you for doing that.
And it is an action item. I had to make a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as placed before us tonight. Any last questions or thoughts? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. 7.1, board member comments.
Pick out game tomorrow at Rolling Story.
How are the sales going on that?
I don't know the numbers, but I do know that both varsity teams ordered shirts as their warm-up shirts, so. Hopefully, hopefully their gym, their tiny gym is covered in them.
Your big game. Christmas party.
We had our district auditors here in the district today. Steve was back there and doing, doing some onsite audit work. One thing they picked up on is that we're not publishing our minutes within two weeks of the, the date of the board meeting. So rather than having the board approve the minutes and then publishing, we'll have to write the minutes up right away and get them into the paper, so.
We sell the ability to edit it, yes?
Yes, yes.
So we retain the ability to put fun come?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that as bad as it got?
Yeah, so far.
So I was in here picking up the packet on Friday in the gin, or the gym. This was all set up for a program?
Little Cubs have their Christmas program.
You handle the rentals. How are we doing on our facilities on rentals?
I just do Topen in here.
How are we doing?
Good. And I, I told Steve this before, I'm surprised how many people rent Gates. I mean, it's, I think more than we anticipated. And everybody's always complimentary on.
Oh, I'm going to make it this.
Lions Club, Lions Club entered pancakes in here.
Cooper's got next month.
Has that been much of a burden to, to kind of manage that? No, it hasn't. I, I got to give Dave and his crew kudos because they do all the setup and every teardown for everything. So knowing that he's still got a position out there, but. Just the, the reservation process and collecting any fees or anything that might. No, it's not bad. The, the biggest thing that I like to do, especially with, with groups that aren't super familiar, and I mean, we've had this facility for three years, but we still have people that still expect a north room or a south room. You know, they had a Thanksgiving here at one point in time, and so just kind of, we turn away a little bit of, a few people that due to some of those constraints. But I always like to meet people just so that they can see what the space looks like and, and kind of get their expectations, but.
Is there some online, online calendar that the public looks at to, if they're looking to rent this facility? Or is that something they just approach your office?
Yep.
And then you say yea or nay?
Yep. Online, it just says, just email me. Or if they email or call like High School or Kristen Cook, she forwards those on to me. Didn't there used to be a, a online reservation tool? There is. We don't keep one for Gates, just because we do enough internal meetings here that it's nice to keep that just as a Google calendar. So that way, when Dr. Gray needs to schedule a meeting or I need to schedule a meeting, we can just pop it on right there and kind of skip some of the steps there. I just went through the process of reserving a city facility. And, and that's all online now, and that was really slick, really easy, and. But apparently, you know, there's a lot more facilities and, and stuff there. Yep. As long as it's not a, a big drag on, on your time and, and our resources. It's kind of fun to see different groups come in and, and the reason I do Gates, you know, I've got the auditory manager stuff for Tote. Gates is similar enough, but you know, a lot of their needs are going to be AV-based anyways or any of those things. So it just kind of makes sense anyways that they're going to end up on my plate anyway, so might as well just come and take care of those from day one.
Well, hearing no other board member comments, that takes care of 23. So I see that we're getting kicked out of, out of Gates. What's happening there?
Caucasus will be in here that night, so we'll move over.
We wouldn't, we, we could have moved them over there, but I just thought it would probably be easier for us to. I'd rather show off the facility. Yeah. I like to keep him or busy. Thank you, Joe.
I think they'll be at the high school commons as well, a couple of the spaces over there.
Yeah, you are hurting your cause here by showing people our facilities.
It's always nice to have them used.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, see you on the 15th over in the library, our old home away from home. So, nothing else, I'd take a motion to adjourn. Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?